All right, so we're just gonna go ahead and get started and Counselor Williams can join us whenever he can get on. We know things come up sometimes. So first I want to welcome all of you to the meeting. Thank you for joining the finance team today, starting at nine thirty-seven. I'm gonna give the finance team the floor. Thank you Counselor Gomez and Counselor Leonardman for joining. And Jerry McCafferty, Kathy Bono, Melanie, and Lindsey and Tim Chan, Lindsey Hackett, I want to say everybody's last name. Melanie, Kobe, and Paul, thank you for joining from the media. Man, focus Springfield of course with your season today. So we'll go ahead and we will get started. I'm gonna turn the floor over to the finance team and to the departments. And then we could start with our question.
Counselors, in so much as the six million dollars, roughly six million dollars in the home funding was put before you first. We figured we'd start with that and we are fortunate enough to have Jerry McCafferty with us, who has much, 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 much more knowledge with regards to home funding than I have. And Jerry can actually walk you through where HUD is at this point with the ARPA home entitlement. I think it's fair to say though, Jerry, that HUD is saying that they're coming forward with additional guidance as to how the funding should be allocated. And they're literally indicating that the city does not have access to spend the money at this point until that guidance has come forward. But with that, I'll turn it over to Jerry to give you an update on where things stand right now with the home ARP funding.
Thank you. I just wanted to say before Jerry gets started, I want to welcome Counselor Hurst. And say Jerry is a gem in the housing department. She always has all the answers to any information I've ever asked for. And just a wonderful person to work with. So, thank you Jerry for being here.
Thank you Counselor Whitfield. Thanks and good morning, everyone. The home ARP allocation is six point, six million sixty-six one oh two dollars. And it is a special allocation of home funds that is used specifically to address homeless issues that have arisen as a result of the pandemic. There was funding last year under the Emergency Solutions Act or the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, which was to create the emergency response to homelessness. This is to create the housing response to homelessness. So the funds are, the funds are being made available to us over a nine-year period. They must be spent by 2030. HUD is, HUD has indicated in its award to us the exact uses for the, that are allowable for the funds. In addition, it is saying that during the summer, they will be issuing additional guidance. That guidance will have all municipalities create a substantial amendment to their action plan. The action plan is the document we create for HUD with all of our HUD funding. It's a result of public planning. We put it on paper saying here's how, here's exactly how we're gonna spend the funds. We must submit that to HUD for approval and we wouldn't be able to spend these funds until that is approved. The funds are specifically for, there's a specific population that can be assisted with the funds. It's individuals who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, other populations at great risk of housing instability, and veterans who would be part of any of these groups. There are, the activities that are allowed under it are production or preservation of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, support services, and the purchase or development of non-congregate shelter. This would be buildings where rooms are used for shelter instead of big dorm spaces. And that was, that's one of the solutions that has come up across the country in reaction to COVID, so that COVID is not spreading.
Can you repeat that one more time, the non-congregate shelter?
Non-congregate, non-congregate shelter is instead of using dorms for shelter, it's using rooms. So this is most often hotel rooms. So in many places, including here, we've used hotel rooms for shelter. This would allow the purchase of a hotel to be used on an ongoing basis for that purpose. HUD has told us that this, this planning period is coming up and there'll be this plan we must submit to HUD, as I said. But they've given us what guidance they have now so that we can do the planning with our partners. This will be a lot of determining who in the community has capacity to be doing any development, has access to locations where they could develop, as well as figuring out if we're not doing development, what opportunity there is for using tenant-based vouchers. But we currently have about, close to a hundred people living in hotels that are there as shelter. And so these are the funds we think of to be figuring out what the next steps are for those, for that population.
So Jerry, I think it's fair to say that HUD has laid out how you can actually, how they anticipate that you can spend the money. The issue ultimately is out of all of those, what's on the menu from HUD, how the city's actually gonna target in to figure out allocation of resources. And that would come through the action plan.
That's correct. And that action plan, as I mentioned, is a public process.
And can you just repeat for the council members what the eligible uses are?
Production or preservation of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, which is like vouchers, supportive services, so the staff, people who would provide assistance to people in those other housing types, and then the purchase or development of non-congregate shelter.
I'm sorry, the second was, was the production or preservation of affordable housing?
The first one is production or preservation of affordable housing. Second one is tenant-based rental assistance, vouchers. Third is services, and fourth is non-congregate shelter.
Okay. And you said the population again was homeless, head into homelessness, planned domestic violence, and veterans?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, any, so I wanted to say that Marcus is actually focused Springfield too. So Counselor President Williams, so we wanted to thank him for joining as well. And.
Thank you Counselor.
You're welcome. Is there any questions for Tim or Jerry from counselors?
Counselor Gomez.
Sure, sure Counselor.
Gary, I need to know more how this funding affects veterans and how they're used with veterans.
So it will be used for any veterans? It is veterans that, that are in any of those other groups that we're talking about. So, and so first, they must meet the homeless, at risk of homelessness, or fleeing domestic violence. And then it's indicating the HUD guidance is specifically saying, you know, calling out among that population, make sure, you know, this is also serving veterans who meet those definitions.
And right now, do we know how many veterans we have within the city that is partaking or will partake of the services?
We, so our, our homeless services are organized on a regional basis. We serve, our continuum of care serves all of Hampden County. In Hampden County, right now, we know of twelve homeless veterans. That is veterans who are in shelter, in, in, in emergency shelter, in hotels, or actually unsheltered on the streets. And we're working with those twelve individuals to house them. They may be housed before we get this money. I mean, we track people experiencing homelessness on an everyday basis. And people come into homelessness and get housed, and new people come into homelessness. So I don't know what the status of those particular twelve people will be by the time we receive these funds.
Why then this veterans are not being referred to us that are established to help them out and put them in, in the federal benefits and take them off our state and city benefits?
They are, they are regularly referred to programs. Many of them have barriers that keep them from being able to access services. Either, some of them are, many of them are not eligible for VA assistance. Some of them have things like query records or sex offender records, or have other issues that, or are, have active substance use that keep them out of some of the existing programs. So we continue to work with them, trying to find something that will address their housing needs and their other needs as well.
It's a truth, the state is, some of those veterans are not veterans because they do not qualify for veteran services whatsoever.
We do a screen, we work with the Veterans Administration. We do a screening of anyone who says that they are a veteran and they actually pull their records to see if they are a veteran. Some people, yes, it's true, say that they are a veteran and we find that there's no documentation that supports that.
I would like to pursue this more closely with you and the committee because I think we're not using the resources that we have at hand with federal to take care of many of these businesses, as I got a whole bunch of openings in, in my places and I have not been touched at all to house any veterans whatsoever. Well, thank you.
Thank you Counselor. And I just want to reiterate something that Jerry said. They're waiting for more guidance and the money cannot be spent until they have that guidance and they reviewed it. They're also gonna have an action team on how to divvy up the funds and put them in different categories. And so I'm pretty sure that they will keep us informed on the process and let us know how to relate these resources to the community. So just wanted to reiterate is nothing's happening right now until we get some guidance from the state, correct, or HUD?
From HUD.
Thank you. Thank you Counselor Gomez, Counselor Leonardman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for holding this meeting. I have a couple of thoughts on, on the categories that you said thus far, and then I have a question for Jerry and/or the whole team. So I think, you know, under the four categories, there's, there's probably some obvious uses that we would all agree on. You know, we held, many of us met recently around the Greater Regional Housing Analysis that, that Wayfinders completed with the Donahue Institute. And so I think that the production and preservation clause stuck out to me in terms of, you know, the need to actually put funds into real development of housing that is affordable at all levels. And I think on the staffing side, I'm wondering if any of that could be used to support some of the existing positions that exist for, for sort of outreach and guidance around homelessness issues. I know, for example, like at Friends of the Homeless, they have some navigators that help people, you know, kind of work through the system. But I know they are very much overburdened in terms of their, their caseloads. So I'm wondering if once we are able to spend, we might be able to put some, some resources there. And then the, the two questions I had were around the difference between production and preservation and purchase and development. Wondering if you could clarify how you see the difference there? And then following that, you mentioned, you know, there'd be a public process around the action plan. So I'm wondering if you could go into some more detail on what that public process would look like and how we can make sure that the city council is involved in that.
Jerry, could you start with the outreach issues so that the counselors are fully aware of where we've been with Catholic charities on that?
Yes. So I think the first thing to know around outreach, we have used our Emergency Solutions Grant funding that was made available due to the pandemic, the ESG CV funds to fund outreach. That is, we particularly, we did, we partnered with several organizations, but the largest partnership is with Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities has three outreach workers who undertake street outreach and have specifically been finding people who are unsheltered, working with them to put them into hotel rooms. While they're in hotel rooms, working with them to access all benefits and apply for housing. And there is money to then shift those people into housing. So we have significant investment already in COVID relief funds that is funding an outreach component. Friends of the Homeless also got funds to, to work in that area with the CV funds. They are also a regular recipient of monies under our, under our annual ESG allocation. And every year we provide funding for them to do that work. That work of working with people to get them ready to house, for housing and, for instance, getting together their documents and other things so that they're ready to apply for housing and, and applying. This, this fund, these funds can be used for support. As I mentioned, yes, they can be used for supportive services and that would include housing counseling, housing search function, housing, you know, any of that work to move people toward housing. So that's the first part of the question. The second piece was distinguishing between the two eligible activities. The first is production or preserve, preservation of affordable housing. That last one is purchase or development of non-congregate shelter. So I think it's not that purchase or development, we shouldn't focus on production or preservation or purchase or development. I think what's the, the focus is, is one is for affordable housing and the other is for shelter. Usually, home funds are, have never before been made available for shelter. So the second piece is, is that purchase or development of shelter.
So you're saying sort of temporary versus permanent?
Yes, yes, housing versus shelter. And because we created the hotel program, we have had, we, we, we do not have a shortage of shelter right now. So that's one thing for me to just note, that the Friends of the Homeless has excess capacity at this time. I mean, they have unfilled beds. So someone seeking shelter is able to access shelter right now. And then as to the public process, so first, the first part of that is I'm doing information gathering right now. I'm talking to all the providers. We will have some meetings with people experiencing homelessness. And we will do a lot of data analysis. From that, we'll put together a proposal. That proposal is subject to, to, we then have a public process where we put that proposal before the public and get, and get comment back on it. We take into account those comments, make any changes as a result of those comments, and then we submit it to HUD. So at the point that it is available for public comment, we will absolutely make sure we provide it to the council and, you know, let you know the way to get public comment to us.
Thank you very much. That's great information. So I did write down production or preservation of affordable housing and purchase or development of non-congregate shelter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, I will move on. TJ?
Counselor, could, could we just get a sense from the folks that are on the committee and the council as to your sense as to when you would like to actually have this come back up to the council for consideration? I, I, I know we advanced it, it came back to committee. But now I, I don't know if you're comfortable now having it come back to council or if you want to wait to a future point in time that you might feel more comfortable with.
Well, you know, I feel comfortable since we know what the funds are gonna be used for. I'll, Counselor Leonardman speaking in a moment. I would just ask that through the process and maybe having someone on the action plan committee just to, you know, listen to what's going on, give our feedback. But as far as like knowing what the funds are used for, I think we have the judiciary responsibility to know so that we can communicate it. But it's your responsibility to oversee the programs. We just want to keep up to speed. Well, I, I must be, you may just want to be up to speed. So the different programs, the amounts in the programs, and how it's gonna be communicated to the community.
So if, if we had somebody on the, from the council on the, the outreach in terms of the development of the action plan, that should be sufficient?
For me, it would be. I don't know what other counselors are thinking, but I'll let Counselor Leonardman respond. That would be sufficient enough for me if someone from the council is on the committee. Counselor?
I agree with Counselor Whitfield. I think the only, on, on all points. I think the only question that I would have, and it's sort of applicable to the, the larger discussion as well, and to kind of other situations where we accept very large sums of money, which is, you know, personally, although it, it would take a little bit more time, I would really prefer a scenario where we could accept the funds, you know, and have them in our coffers, but be voting on expenditures of those funds in smaller amounts and in a more sort of program-specific basis. I think that would allow for kind of more involvement and understanding by the council as time goes on. And I'm not saying, you know, we're gonna approve every salary and every hundred and fifty-dollar expenditure. But, you know, six million is a lot, ninety-six million's even more. We've had this discussion, I know, around the MGM funds and the, you know, administration has certainly kept their commitment to involving the council in that process. But I, you know, I brought this up at that time too. So I guess the question for finances, is there a mechanism by which we could do that legally, accept the total amount, but then actually vote on expenditure or, or formal appropriation of smaller amounts into the different program categories?
Thank you. TJ Plant has joined us, so I'll let him answer. But I think he answered this for us at another meeting before. But TJ, you could go ahead and take the floor.
Yeah, so at this point, the only role of the city council is to allow us to spend the money, is to basically open, open the, the checkbook and allow us to kind of go ahead and spend the money. What I've been talking to the mayor about was soliciting input from the city council. Maybe we do one-on-one meetings, hearings, whatever it may be. Put together a list and then report back to the council on all the stuff we're planning on doing. Is kind of where my head's at right now, is like, you know, sitting there and say, okay, once we know, we know what the buckets are. We know what, you know, the job creation, economic development, equity, premium pay, all that stuff, broadband. And then we know what the subcategories are, which would be housing and, you know, neighborhoods and all that stuff. Is getting, kind of putting together a plan, not necessarily for approval and appropriation, but just kind of making sure everybody has their, their say in kind of what we think the city needs and the way we think we're going.
Thank you TJ. I think, I like the way that sounds. Everybody's on the same page. Everybody, we only have the authority to approve the funds. We don't have control over how it's spent. I, I do understand that. We're all from working in finance. But I think that if we're all on the same page, that it's a good start. So we're not questioning things that happen, you know, down the road. I did want to offer Council President Marcus Williams the opportunity to give his input. He, since he will probably be, you know, suggesting he will be on some of these.
Thank you, Madam Chair. TJ, thank you for explaining that. I agree, certainly agree with the, the process there. You know, I do feel that each counselor needs to have a more kind of intentional approach into explaining, you know, how they see the funds being expended because we're all having different conversations with people in the community. So to just put that all together, I think would be a good effort on, on both of our parts. I'm happy to help you work that out in terms of if it's gonna be, you know, a person here or two people or whatever. But we can do that. Do, do we have an estimated kind of timeline as to when that should take place by?
So where the money, half the money is, has been wired to us. We're coming to the council Monday night for acceptance of the ninety-three point eight million. And once that happens, really, there's no set timeframe. The only set timeframe is the urgency for some of the small businesses, some of the nonprofits, some of the other, you know, things that really need to happen with relative speed. You know, and that's kind of what I would say would guide our urgency would just be, what's the need out there? Like, how quickly do we need to get small business money out there? How quickly do we need to get nonprofit assistance? How quickly do we need to get homeowner assistance, you know, fuel assistance, whatever it may be?
And also the, the lost revenue piece for the FY twenty-two.
On the lost revenue piece, yeah, sorry. That's, that's the biggest thing. It balances our budget for the next few years. But the lost revenue piece, accepting it allows us to then appropriate the twelve million dollars for the lost revenue. But the rest of it, we can go at the pace that makes sense for the, for the city.
That makes sense. All right, yeah. So feel free, I mean, we'll, we can circle back and kind of just develop a plan around hearing more directly from the counselors and on behalf of, of course, constituents they're serving. So happy to set that up. But just really appreciate finances' really willingness to work with us on this. I think, you know, again, just in terms of the appropriation piece, that's the, the role of the council. But I think because we are representatives of the people, it makes, it only makes sense to, to have a direct, kind of direct access in explaining how this fund should be expended. So I just appreciate your efforts there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to just echo his sentiments on, thank you to the finance team and the departments for being very open to us. I know that behind the scenes, I'm asking a lot of questions, but I always get to answer. TJ and Lindsey answered the phone. Melanie, I don't have your number, but I'll get it soon. And so I definitely, thank you. I definitely appreciate all of you all are doing. This is a tough time with a lot of work and responsibility and you have the council that asks you for everything right now. And you guys are just really doing a great job. So any other questions regarding the home funds? I feel comfortable. I don't think I have a quorum to, a quorum to accept it, but I definitely, well, Counselor Williams.
Yeah, I'm happy to serve as the next official if you need me.
Okay, thank you. So I'm happy to move it forward and accept the funds at the next city council meeting. Is there any objections to that? Counselor Leonardman, how do you feel about that?
Sorry, I got, I got confused with my buttons here. I think that that is fine. And, and I, you know, I like the way that it sounds. I mean, with it, you know, like I said, I would prefer a different process if the mechanisms don't exist for us to break it up more, then I certainly have, have no issue with that. And I would also say, and I know we're gonna move into the larger discussion. I think there's, you know, with, with regards to like the obvious aid relief, I think we all agree on that. So I don't think in the context of the larger funds, that the administration should delay in the releasing of, you know, any basic like tenant and homeowner assistance, small business relief, the twelve point two for lost revenue. I mean, I think if the, personally, if the administration brought to the council, you know, like a, a basic package in the beginning that was just like very straightforward and obvious relief funds, I, you know, I would be prepared to approve that as well. I think, I think the conversation we're having is about kind of the broader investment over the next several years that these funds are available, where we need some, you know, some more direct input. So, so I think we're all on the same page. I think it sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Leonardman. All right. Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Just wanted to make sure everybody's voice is heard. Um, is Counselor Hurd still on? Counselor Gomez, do you have any input? I know that you're very concerned about the veteran funds. And I know that Jerry and Tim has committed to, um, you know, giving us more information as it develops. So are you fine with that, sir?
Uh, I, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that, uh, we are helping our veterans if they are fully qualified veterans and that, uh, that portion of the community i- i- is taken out, uh, and put in the federal funds. And if they, uh, qualify, that way it alleviates other dollars for other needy people within the city when federal can take care of this individuals. And, and that's what I do.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. All right. So Tim, I think we're good. Jerry, I think we're good. Thank you for everything you do, uh, for the city. And, uh, we look forward to working with you more on this. All right.
Jerry, thanks Kathy.
Oh, thank you Kathy. Kathy didn't speak. I didn't know if she wants to. She can.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, all righty. Thanks Kathy. All right. So we'll move to the finance team with the, um, big money. Well, six million is big too, but the big, big.
Um, can I start by saying, Counselor, thank you so much. And I just, and I'm sure that this is understood, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware that the six million dollars is a separate pot from the ninety-three. I'm sure everybody knows that. Um, I just want to make sure that it's clear. The ninety-three is very flexible in that a lot of the opportunities for funding will also cover what the other grants cover as well. So much like a lot of the COVID funded we got, it's important to see every piece and determine where we want to spend from what bucket, because lots of the buckets uses overlap. So, um, that's why I'm glad we're having this conversation all together, because I just don't want to think that six million dollar, that six million dollars is coming out of the ninety million. It's not. It's a separate bucket of money. And we anticipate more money coming in for different things related to economic development.
More money, more money, more money.
That's, keep it coming, keep it coming.
I just want to make sure that that's clear. Like I said, I'm sure it already is, but I, I just wanted to mention that. Cause it can be, it's confusing all around, so.
Thank you for that explanation. Or is yours?
So, uh, I guess I'll start. So just to kind of put everything in a, uh, global perspective. Uh, as you know, we've been allowed to deficit spend over the last fifteen months to deal with the pandemic. Uh, we received numerous, uh, grants, you know, entitlements, and then money to the state through the CARES program. Um, so what we're trying to do, uh, is maximize first FEMA, uh, as the first pot of money. We've submitted two and maybe three applications, Melanie. I'm not sure.
Two so far. Two so far. We're waiting for them to complete their final obligation so that we know what the pattern is of funding, so that we can then submit more applications.
So we're going to be spending everything we can to FEMA to FEMA reimburse us. But everything that FEMA denies, uh, we're going to submit to the CARES money that we have access to. Uh, and then we're going to spend all the CARES money that we can on legal, legal, unappropriate expenses related to COVID, um, now through December thirty-first. And then, once we exhaust as much of the CARES and all that stuff, we're going to then spend ARPA money. The rescue plan ARPA money is the most flexible money we have. Um, the hundred and fifty page regulations, I believe, uh, Lindsay sent out along with a fact sheet and kind of a, a brief summary of what kind of global, um, pots and buckets and vision of it. But generally speaking, if we can tie it to the pandemic, uh, economic recovery, job creation, social equity, um, housing, uh, financial assistance, I mean, you name it, you, we can do it in this bill. And that's why we need to be very thoughtful and strategic. Uh, so I'm not in any particular rush to spend it, other than what I said before, which is based upon the need of the city. So if we have a lot of small businesses that need it immediately, otherwise they might close, we need to move a little more swiftly. If we have a little more time to kind of be thoughtful in our approach to, uh, whatever it is, then we want to kind of take that approach. Um, we have time to spend the money. We don't need to spend it, uh, spend it, um, all at once. But what I want to do is maximize every dollar that we have already received and every dollar that we're entitled to. And then, um, we're, uh, swirling in the background is, as we just heard, is this infrastructure bill. Uh, who knows how long that's going to take, so we can't bank on it at this point. But, you know, hopefully there's money coming to us to do, um, infrastructure improvements that are beyond what's allowed in the, uh, re- rescue plan law. So, well, we're going to have the city council on Monday.
Can you just list some of those categories again? I only got economic recovery, social equity, housing, small businesses.
Nonprofit, nonprofit assistance, premium pay. We're not going to do anything with water and sewer, uh, because they're a separate entity. Broadband, we have some pretty neat stuff in the pipeline for broadband and internet access. Um, Tim, I got to double back with you with a conversation I had with the school department yesterday. It dovetails nicely into what we were talking about, uh, the other day. Um, and that, so those are the broad categories. Then we could break it down into more.
You're missing there, uh, TJ's health.
Yeah, oh yeah. Thanks.
Obviously.
Like, health, health and wellness?
Mental health, health and wellness, behavioral health. Yeah, and all, don't, don't forget the pandemic recovery.
Right. And another important thing they talk about is making local government whole. So any economic downfalls or losses that we felt from the pandemic, they want us to bring our staff back, which we didn't, knock on wood, we didn't have to lay off anyone, but they want to bring our programming back, our staff back. And we've pretty much done that in the FY twenty-two budget, but that's an important thing that they want us to do too.
Uh, the vaccination stuff we've been talking about, you know, they, they have money available to do all sorts of vaccination, uh, sites and stuff. So there's a, it's a robust, uh, law with a lot of money with it, so.
That's great.
So when you think about all that, ninety-three million doesn't actually go that far. But we have the opportunity to make some big, um, differences and transform like we did with the tornado money. So it's exciting.
Like, I want, I, I want to encourage the city council and the, and the city and the residents, let's try to think big and think long-term. Are there things we can do that'll like create an infrastructure or whatever it may be, uh, just a pipeline or improve all the health outcomes that we have? This is, this is the time to do it.
Um, what'd you say the timeframe to spend it is?
December twenty twenty-four to allocate it, and I think spending by twenty twenty-six, am I right?
That's right.
Melanie?
Yes, twenty-six, correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So when you say allocated, can you?
So it has to be budgeted within a specific use or program by then? And then we have two more years to make sure all the funding is actually spent.
And you spend it before the two years?
Internally obligated to department?
I don't know.
Can you spend it before twenty twenty-four though, or?
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, anything else you guys wanted to say about it?
No, I mean, the problem is, I, I don't have a lot to say, because I don't. I have a lot of, I, we put together a list of ideas that kind of just to kind of track and, you know, assign some dollar values to, but it's nothing concrete. And what I want to do is add to the list of what the council wants to see on the list. Yeah, I know, don't get out. Tracy, you got one yes out of me yesterday. Don't, don't want to go to your head.
I did, I did, I did. I'll take it, I'll take it for now.
But I.
I got two yesterday, actually.
What I really want is just a solicit input from folks and really get a, I, I want to do it right. It's a lot, it's a lot of money to invest in our community. I want to do it right. And there's a lot of ideas swirling around. I can't tell you how many letters I got asking for money once they heard that this was a reality. Um, and I want to kind of, and we have to make sure we abide by our procurement process and all those things that go into it. So, um, the more I know what we want to do, the easier it is for me to figure out how to do it. I don't know if that makes sense?
It does. Um, before I open it up to counselors, when we were on the, um, budget meetings, there were a few departments that were asking for, um, more staff. One that really, um, comes to mind is three-one-one, because I think the administrative side would be lacking because they have to take calls, um, Roy. And so I have a list of what everybody says, so instead of like putting them all out right now, I can just send you guys that list. Um, I know that Counselor Letterman wanted something to happen with Airbnbs. Um, DPW wanted to train some of their current staff to be CDO and hoisting drivers. I mean, I think those are all like great things that we could do with some of the funds, um, if possible. But I have a list. I will send it and then we could meet offline about it. It was just some of the notes that I took, um, from the department, which it wasn't as much as I thought it would be. Um, but it's still a few.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Counselors? Well, before I move on, you guys know what I'm going to ask for. I don't know if you know what I'm going to ask for. Of course, I'm going to ask for some money to combat the gun violence in the city of Springfield. That can either go in the form of a nonprofit or the, um, Office of Racial Justice with Ms. Helen. Um, I, I'm asking for a million dollars in that pot. That's a lot. But it's, it's something we have to have enough money in combat the city of Springfield along with homelessness and everything else. Um, we have young adults and young children out here dying right now. And I have to deal with the families, the parents, friends, everything else. That, along with police reform, I really, really like, top on my agenda. Like I said, I'll send you all the list, and I just wanted to make you aware that that will be part of the list. Um, Counselor, I think this is Council, Council President Marcus Williams.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, kind of just piggybacking on what you said a little bit, we know some, that summer jobs can help alleviate uh, some of the folks, you know, kids being in the streets this summer during the hotter, hotter months. So I was wondering, TJ, um, is there a possibility that the funding can be used in some way as a conduit to get to some of organizations for, so that they can, you know, of course, include, um, more summer hiring? Uh, has there any, been any plans around that? Maybe working with parks or just, just, uh, summer jobs is, I, I think is, is, it's, it's cool, especially during this time?
So the short answer is yes, we can certainly find a way to figure out summer jobs and try and take hire and, uh, the issue we've had is actually hiring. We're struggling getting lifeguards. We're struggling getting, uh, rec leaders. Um, that we actually are using rescue plan or CARES money for increasing the hourly rate to match the state for lifeguards, because we can't get lifeguards. Um, so if we can have money to go out to either a nonprofit or a series of nonprofits and, and even our own park and recreation to do that, I absolutely, uh, be willing to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it'll be an opportunity. And I don't know how that, you know, process is rolled out or how it looks right now. But, I mean, even if it was in the form of, you know, an RFP that, that called for more summer positions and then had organization, organizations bid to, you know, whatever, to receive the funding or whatever that looks like. Again, there's a, there's a lot of possibility around that. But, uh, yeah, I do, I do think that's an important step that we need to be taking this summer, um, and then subsequent summers. But I appreciate that input.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly agree with you and, and with the council president on those priorities. And in terms of our, our current hiring, please send, please send a list to the council of, of the openings. Um, I was a rec leader all through high school. It was awesome. So I definitely think it's a fantastic opportunity for our kids, um, our high school kids, older high school kids. So we definitely would like to get that out to folks. Um, I, I think more broadly on this, I think, you know, just similar to what we discussed, um, previously. I know we've discussed it in this committee. We've discussed it in the COVID nineteen committee, just putting a process together um, about how to keep the council involved. And then I think beyond that, I think surveying really broadly and in a non-traditional way. Like, I, I think we should get together around, how can we reach folks to get their input that don't normally give their input? Because the pandemic has really gotten into, it, it's touched everybody in the city, every corner of the city. And I think that if we can hear from those people more directly, I think it will really inform some of the longer-term investments and some of the more obvious and, and immediate investments. I think, you know, when we held the, um, the town hall last week, and I really appreciate finance coming in and, and being involved, because I think you having your voices there was really helpful. Um, even off of that, we definitely heard, you know, some new concerns that came up. I think, you know, one that kind of rises is, um, the things that came up around clinical health workers and the shortage there and, and the creative ideas we were able to talk about in that moment in terms of trying to support that, which, which ties into everything we just spoke about. So if we can work with the administration, and I think, you know, through the COVID committee, through this committee, um, in, in getting and reaching people in that way, I think that you're going to get a lot of buy-in from the community. And then also something that had come up on that town hall was doing like a public RFP process for the funds that are able to go out to organizations and, and businesses. Um, because I think that's a way, you know, that we can push it to folks who, again, might not previously have gotten access. I know it's kind of a rare situation when we're really in the position to be granting money out. So I think if we can really make sure that folks who may have not previously had the opportunity uh, to be involved in that sort of programming, uh, are able to, I think that's going to be essential for the future. So just my thoughts, but I'm glad to see us, you know, moving forward in that regard. And, and hopefully we could develop something formal, perhaps in conjunction, um, you know, with all the counselors and the relevant committees.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Any, uh, response to that, or we're just listening right now?
Madam Chair, TJ, I, I, as eager as we all are to, to invest the funding, I, I think it's important to note, you know, the, the concern and the, the cautiousness we're having with regards to the, the potential auditing at the backend as to how we're spending the money. And if you want to just comment on that a little bit, TJ, because it, it is, you know, a concern. Uh, we experienced some of that with DR funding, uh, with the tornado. Um, and going through that process, if you, you know, you want to make sure that we, we've aligned the funding the way it's supposed to be aligned, uh, and that there's really no questions that come back to us at the backend five years from now, when somebody knocks on the door and says, we want to audit, you know, how you spent the money.
Yeah, and an important thing that we learned during their tornado process, especially with federal dollars, we have to do it right from the moment we start. So the procurement process has to be spot on, our records have to be spot on, our reporting has to be spot on. So that's why it's really important that, and I'm glad that everybody's fine with OMB taking the lead, um, because it really just needs to be centralized, one location, all the ideas come through us. The reporting comes through us, the spending goes through us, because really that's the only way to meet all the, um, regs and compliance for the, for federal dollars. And TJ, I don't know if you want to add on to that about what our office plans I'm doing are?
Hey, hold on a second. I got a, like, five trash trucks that just pulled up. So I got to go on the side of the house so you guys can hear me.
So one, I mean, one thing that we did talk a little bit about and not to get too off topic on what we are talking about, um, TJ did mention bringing on two grant-funded employees. So, um, because we really need that much help. This is a lot of money. There's a lot of reporting. There's a lot of procurement. There's a lot of everything involved with all this. Um, so that's why I think, I mean, just starting from the beginning, this meeting, this is getting everybody on the same page, everybody on board. Um, and the more information that we can share, the more ideas we can share, it's going to make life easier for everybody. Us in the beginning, making sure it's done properly. Us four years later, five years later, six years later at the end, when they're asking us for this and that, that happened six, six years ago. Um, so. That's kind of, look at the garden party little, little, uh, side note, but.
No, no, we definitely want to do it right. Um, like, we've been doing a lot of things right in the city of Springfield that's, we're not being audited for. We need to keep that train going. We need to keep that train going where other communities and towns are being audited. So, you know, let's keep the train going. Let's do things right from the beginning. And, you know, we gotta trust the experts. But as long as everybody's on the same page and the communication is there, I think that we'll be fine.
All right, I'm back. You guys all good now? You don't need me anymore?
We're gonna be audited.
Oh, good, good. Hug it out. Hug it out.
No, if you wanna say something, TJ, please.
No, no, I think what I heard was everything Olivia said is actually a hundred percent accurate. The good news is we've been through this before. We know what we're doing. We're on top of it. We, I think we mentioned to the council, we posted, we did not hire yet for two positions to help us manage this grant. I'm contemplating creating a unit similar to the disaster recovery unit that was created.
Well, that was the Counselor Hurst.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would stress, and I, I heard this time and time again at the, the budget hearings, and I think it's relevant now with respect to all of this money. I think one of the issues that we have as a city is, is twofold. One, folks don't know all of the great work that we're doing. And two, folks don't know of the opportunities that they can take advantage of. And I think we have, we, we have a difficult time expanding our reach in the areas that might not normally have been targeted, but that should have been targeted. And so to the extent that we can get what it is that we're doing out there. And I don't know how you all disseminate information, but it needs to go beyond whatever it is that we're doing now, so that the people who need this information get it and can take advantage of it. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I think that, that those are great points. I do wanna mention that I rode by the new Sam Bolden Park over here in Ave today, and I rode by the Dbury construction. And I was pleased to see the level of diversity that were on both sites. However, I don't know if they're Springfield residents. I don't know, you know, who's getting the contracts and things like that. And I'm sure we can ask for that information later. But I'm at least out there, and I can see it, and it's visible, and it's visible to the community. So we just wanna make sure that all communities get access to the same information. And I think we can accomplish that as long as we work together, that we can definitely accomplish that in this meeting. And, and future meetings are a great step in the right direction, as far as I'm concerned.
Thanks, counselors. And I, I agree. We follow all the rules and regs set forth by federal funding. Obviously, we need to announce it or advertise it in certain ways or publications. But if you have additional ideas, please bring them to us. We're open to, obviously, any ideas that you guys might have. So if you have anything specific that you think that we could be doing, please bring it to TJ and I. And, you know, we can talk about anything like that with you.
Sure. Thank you for the offer. So I know that we have another engagement to get to today. Is there, are there any other questions, comments, anything that folks wanna say? Counselor President Williams, can we make a motion to accept the funding as presented?
Sure.
Okay. So is that the motion?
If you'd like to make a motion, I'm happy to second.
Okay, second? All right. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we'll present it as accepted by the finance committee.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure from counselors, I couldn't make it because of the time of day. There will be some questions. But I will try to preface it as much as possible at the city council meeting. And just really thank you all for meeting with us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Meeting adjourned.